City Council meeting of April twenty second, twenty twenty four, the time is four oh one P M. And Mr. City Manager, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Mayor Beaver.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Pretend Venable.
Thank you, ma'am. Planning Department Operations. Who's gonna open this up? Is this Mr. Matlock?
Yeah, it'll be me presenting today about kind of the Planning Department, kind of what our role is, our function, kind of what the process is and things that we are doing to make, doing business in the city of Uchiapa better into the future. And so kind of quickly, I'll go over kind of the overview of the department. So I oversee as the Deputy Director of Community Development, the Community Development Divisions under Development Services. And one of those in particular is the Planning Department. I'm supported by Maria Kuhlhoven, which is my administrative assistant. And then I have Madeline Jordan as an Associate Planner, Christian Farmer as my Assistant Planner, Katie Syme as our Development Services Technician, and then we also employ consultants on an as-needed basis, either for environmental review or just kind of staff augmentation when we have a heavy workload coming through, making sure that we're able to respond to customers in a timely fashion. And one of the components, I think, that is exciting about the Planning Division is that we interact with many, many different types of people, from just standard residents that are looking to do something on their property, to those that want to develop their property, to real estate, you know, realtors and those involved, their developers, neighbors, advocates, I mean, anyone with, you know, either very keen sense of what the development process is to the layperson we get to interact with and try to help them understand what the process is, kind of what the zoning codes are, and then making sure that the process is effective and transparent and fair for everyone through that effort. Now, planning itself is a pretty old kind of profession. Historically, communities and civilizations have planned where they want to go. So this is an example of an old fort kind of setup in medieval of, in the medieval times within Wales, where they were planning out, you know, what the castle looked like, how the different activities happened, Roman Empire, same thing, Egypt, they all had this kind of sense of, we have space and we need to use it effectively. And that's really kind of where planning started. And then kind of the modern day version that we are used to was really kind of through the Industrial Revolution, where you had big warehouses, you know, chimneys blowing smoke, and you had people living there. And we're getting impacted by that. And so there was this idea of, okay, certain uses should be congregated to each other, some should be separated further, that way, you know, the people working in those factories aren't necessarily getting poor health outcomes from that. And so really, kind of the key focus of planning is, is setting the goals and policies and kind of managing the growth and development and addressing kind of the fundamental needs for growth, housing, other resources, because at the end of the day, the land that we have is, is limited. There isn't, you know, you know, the resources do hit a cap. And so we want to make sure that we're being good stewards of the environment that we have and planning ahead for the growth that may occur. So then that, that way, we're responding to that, that outcome. And then kind of the hierarchy of how city planning kind of works in the United States and in California. Certainly, all of our authority is first granted through the U S Constitution and then federal law, the California Constitution, state law, then our general plans, which is our kind of heavy, long-term vision document for the city. And then our specific plans and local codes, those are the help implement the planning process in the state of California. And then planning is kind of broken up into two different kind of worlds. The first one is advanced planning, which is really kind of the long-term efforts. So setting the stage of what development should be into the future. So this includes our general plan, specific plans, the zoning code and design guidelines and other standards. So very kind of abstract concepts that we are setting the rules in place for people to follow into the future. And then current planning is all the things that happen as part of actual development being built. So it's the conditional use permit or maps to subdivided property to build a new restaurant, to establish, you know, a new business is all part of the current planning realm. And so kind of the key component is that planning does live in two worlds. We are both facilitators and helping support, what is the dream of the community? Where do we want to see, you know, the city of Uchiapa be in ten, fifteen, twenty, forty, fifty years? But also, the real world is that setting a dream doesn't necessarily make that happen. You have to be engaged in that process. And so we are also working on how to make those dreams come true and facilitating the review of individual projects. Now, the development review process is definitely kind of a procedural thing. It is a bureaucratic process in place where we kind of start through, you know, initially a counter discussion, all the way going through, let's say, the Plan Commission, having a hearing and going through that. I do want to kind of provide a snapshot of kind of what that process kind of looks at a very high level. And so we're gonna meet Riker, the Road Runner. He is a longtime resident from Crafton Hills, wants to start a business, really owns his own store, and is entrepreneur. So he sees a market in selling specialized products and he wants to start business with the Atme Corporation, selling goods for, in the city of Uchiapa. So the first thing he does, visit City Hall, figure out kind of what is the rules and regulations. And so he visits the city planning staff, learns about the zoning districts that we have in the community, also learns about the applications that are necessary for them to do it. And then ultimately, we'll submit their plans and then the staff itself reviews internally for completeness. So everything that should be on the plans to help us assess what his goals are on the property is kind of through that process. And then we take it through the next step, which is really looking through kind of process. And so we're looking at, one, does it follow our rules? So the, the general plan, the development code is what we're, we're doing. We're the stewards of that, we're following, making sure that any of the red tape that is associated with government is being done because that is part of our tasks and duties. But then also, we're really looking at the site design, trying to see where the opportunities for the site, potential environmental impacts, making sure that's disclosed. Then working through the procedures and process of, you know, the, the conditions of approval, making sure that it relates to the project. And we also try to help, you know, work through past decisions. So whatever the city council direction has been or the way that the Plan Commission has reviewed projects, we try to incorporate those details too, to know in a project that's moving forward, is it going to be successful or is there red flags that we should debate now to help it? And it really is not necessarily a complete start and stop process. It does involve a lot of iteration. There's a lot of different factors that go into how a property gets developed based on what the constraints are and opportunities on that site. And so we do try to interact a lot through what is initially the idea and application and getting it to a point where it can go before an actual decision. Now, the city Planning Division does have kind of a few key goals that go with it. It's certainly compliance with the code requirements. So the city council has adopted the general plan, adopted the zoning code. And so we are entrusted with the implementation of that and making sure that we are accountable for both fairness and trust and making sure that the business process is easy and understandable. So developers that want to invest in the community aren't playing a guessing game of what, what we're going to require. It's very clear and consistent. The other two, or the other point is we want to make the best version of project. At the end of the day, someone that turns in an application for a Planning Department review, they have a dream of what they want to do with their property. They, they have some sort of investment that they want to do. And our role isn't to say, no, you're not gonna do that at all. But really go, okay, if we're gonna take it through, we want you to be as successful as you can. And also, as a accountability for the community is, is to make it better than what it started off. And so one thing to kind of remember is not, these projects aren't necessarily the brainchild of the Planning Department. These are people that came up with their ideas. Some are really great ideas, some need a little bit of help, and we try to help facilitate them through the, the process, catch issues and making sure that at the end of the day, it does kind of meet the community's expectations for development into the future. We don't want to just approve a bunch of really bad stuff and then have everyone complain because then there's a breakdown in the process. And so we want to make sure that we elevate those expectations. And once it's built, it's gonna be there for a long time. And so we want to make sure that we're addressing that early on in the process. And then at the last time is we want to make sure that the process is easy and fair, timely and consistent. And part of it is, you know, development impacts people in different ways. So we are also looking at, you know, the, the property owner or the applicant submitting a project, what they want to do. But we're also taking a look at what are the neighbors going to experience when that gets built? And what is the decision makers gonna think about when it goes through there? And so if there's something where we go, hey, the Plant Commission hates when they see this type of component, let's change the design a little bit to, to bait that, then it helps make the process a little bit better and a little bit smoother for the applicant at the end of the day. And we also do provide a lot of great ideas and solutions. That's not it, but we do try to help applicants through the process with, with efforts. And then ultimately, the decision-making process is kind of broken down into a few different components. One is the conditions of approval. We're looking at kind of measurable elements and the stage of the project. And it's serving kind of a legitimate purpose. So the applicant needs to do these improvements along the street, to widen the street, to serve the traffic that's coming through the project and other related stuff, to making sure that they're doing it and making sure that those conditions aren't necessarily beyond the scope of what would be reasonable for that project to you. So we try to make sure we're addressing the impacts of the project, but also tie into what is reasonable for the applicant to provide. And then at the end of the day, the decisions are based on findings. And so projects, either at the staff level, Plant Commission, can't just be decided on, yeah, I like this type of use or I don't. It has to be based in a certifiable fact in that. And so it's definitely a process and a procedure that goes through it, but it does help make sure that those decisions are well-informed and legally sound. So then that way, applicants or, or other parties aren't necessarily going after the city for making incorrect decisions. And then certainly, the Plant Commission is one of the key components that helps us do our job. They're the ones that review all the discretionary planning applications. And so they are entrusted by the City Council and appointed by the City Council to make that. So they take in staff's report and recommendations, listen to what those dreams are, taking the public testimony for that and ultimately arrives at a decision based on all the efforts that both applicant and city staff and members of the, the public at large have provided throughout that process. Now, certainly, for Riker Road Runner, we do the opposition with, with different projects. But sometimes, one of the things that is kind of remarkable is after a project is approved and actually developed is sometimes you find that those that hated the project or hated the idea actually like it at the end of the day. They realize, hey, this project was not necessarily as severe or concerning as what it was at the start. I know my first house that I had bought, I had gone through before I purchased it, looked at all the city plans, looked at kind of what happened. A lot of the neighbors in that area did not like the neighborhood being proposed. Now that I live, had lived there and then moved just up the street a little bit, talked to most of their neighbors, they go, we haven't had a problem with that. All our concerns with the project really ended in a materializing. But through the process, it can certainly seem a lot more kind of challenging. And then certainly with the business thing, Riker Road Runner is entrepreneur. And so the Road Runner or the, the Coyote definitely did like the Atme Corporation going on. But public hearings can be contentious. It is something that we recognize, certainly, not everyone's thrilled with the planning process or projects being developed. Some people just don't like speaking or are very hyper invested in issue or may have preconceived notions or, or expectations. But at the end of the day, people want progress, but they don't necessarily want change. And it's hard to facilitate the two. And one thing that's also kind of, one thing that we do recognize is that not everyone that shows up to complain about a project before it's been built necessarily reflects the community at large. It could be just a very kind of hyperized issue. And people that are indifferent really don't speak out saying that, hey, yeah, we're fine with this. It usually is if they're motivated strongly one way or another. And it is also kind of the due process to, to hear all that. And then certainly, some projects just are not as good as others. And so that does reflect through the process to you. After the process or after the project has been approved, they go through the Building Safety Department, which is to verify the construction level plans, really the detailed stuff. This is where our trusses are going, this is the structural calculations, confirming that building codes are met. And then certainly, at the last part is ensuring conditions of approval are also implemented. And so Riker has done a good job, his project has been approved and built, his business is doing well, and he made it through the process. And then as I noted, you know, certainly, we do run a kind of bureaucratic process. We are, at the end of the day, implementing codes and regulations, that is our responsibility. But at the same time, we don't necessarily have to be so stringent, so, you know, poor customer service. The idea of going to city government, trying to pull permits is usually something that's not reflected well. But certainly, those that have done work in other communities have recognized that we do have a very effective team. We do provide a higher level of customer service than many other places. And so we try to make sure that our efforts are common sense and help get them through in a timely fashion. But we're not perfect and there's always more that can be done. And so we've been doing a lot to really improve our process in terms of improving customer service, simplifying the steps, adding transparency, elevating the expectations without cost and reducing the project timelines. And so I'll kind of go through a lot of the key efforts that we're engaging right now. So in terms of transparency, so this is the Uchiapa Planning Page on here, you scroll down. We have our project planning update tracker, it has a map, you can click on individual projects, pull up the details, then you can scroll down on the details, find everything that's happening with it, the status of the project, and even pull up copies of the plans for ease of viewing. We have links to key meeting dates. If it went to, let's say, a Plant Commission, the decision, you can go through and see everything that's there and it's very accessible on the city's website. One of the other things that we have been doing is just in terms of website resources, we really add a lot of detail. So we have a planning frequently asked questions, you can scroll down, find out general zoning questions and other things going on, including information, it's all in Spanish as well. And then we also have added in a number of flyers that are at our public counter, but accessible there. So that one is one about ADUs, this one is about the entitlement process so that anyone that's viewing the website can try to figure out what is going on. We try to make sure there's as much resources on there. And then even other slides for like the housing element, kind of showing the different processes and programs that the city will be implementing as part of our housing element. And so all that information, we're trying to make sure is accessible and easy to digest for members of the community. And then one of the other things that we have been doing too is kind of using the G I S map, providing a lot of stuff. So we have our zoning map where you can search on your property, you can type in your address of what you want to look at. So this is City Hall. From there, you can click on the property, pull up a bunch of attributes, including the zoning designation for the property. You can even scroll down and it'll show you the different, you know, your voting district if you're a resident. It'll show the different utilities, including, you know, whether or not you're Uchiapa Valley Water District or South Mesa or something like that. So there's a lot of information, all the different general plan overlay elements are also on there to help people as they're going through. Or let's say, if they call in, have some zoning questions, we can walk through all the key pieces of information with them at the counter or at, or on the phone and making sure that none of the information is hard to ascertain. It's all right and accessible for them and, and easy to use. And any input we get, we try to update as well. And then one of the things that we've been playing around with more is building up kind of our story map. So it's kind of a narrative of different projects that are going on. Example was with the Wine Country specifically, and we created a story map, showed the history of the vision, and it scrolls down. And so as you scroll through it, you kind of get a narrative of it, but you also get a lot of pictures to kind of show the different points that are going on. And just as a way to help make the information easier, someone can look at it and see exactly what the city has been doing or what the process is currently and not having to try to rely on, on, on other people giving that information, but really just making sure it's all centralized with the city. And then one of the things that's really exciting right now is we are working on an update to our permit software system. So our current version that we have is called City View. It was implemented when the first iPhone came out. So technology certainly has changed a lot since the original iPhone and our permit software certainly has as well. And so this is really gonna allow for a full, you know, anyone, anywhere wants to submit a building permit, a planning application, can do it from the comfort of their home, own home. They don't need to go to the city of Uchiapa, schedule an appointment, they can just do it there. And then we'll take it in if they need to submit new plans, as soon as their designer or architect is done, they can submit it there, we'll get a notification on it. But some of the key things that we really built in the system is, you know, one is kind of simplifying the application so you don't need to know what every single process and procedure we have in the city is. You're really just applying for kind of three master planning applications, is administrative, is it a policy decision, like a general plan amendment that requires city council, or is it a discretionary review that requires Plan Commission? You don't need to know, hey, am I doing a conditional use permit in a variance and this and that and this? We do all that in the back end, they're just submitting the application and then we're helping them with all the procedural stuff. That way, they don't need to know that, that stuff. Because most applicants, we find, unless they're doing a lot of work and planners themselves don't know all those different types of applications, it really isn't helpful. And even one of the things that, you know, is kind of annoying for both us and the applicants, if they're doing, let's say, a few different applications, they're filling out several different application, you know, materials for one project, like in this case, it's just one. They just do it once, they provide the plans, and then we help them through what it is in terms of the city's code to administer. And so our hope is that that simplifies the process a lot for them and really keeps it pretty condensed through that. And then one of the other things that's, that is part of that process is it provides an interactive portal. So if you're an applicant or you're the property owner, you get to see exactly where the project is in its steps. So if it's in the plan review phase, you can see this is where it's at, awaiting conditional approval or it's been conditioned. And it allows those kind of metrics to be there and very accessible for applicants and anyone that's interested in the process. And then it also has, in terms of our end, a lot of information that we can view, see where the status is as well. But if they're missing stuff or there's other actions that need to happen, let's say there's a code enforcement issue, we also get notified of that, making sure that we can resolve those at the same time and use the application to fix everything that could be added in issue. And then also, a lot of the process is built in transparency and engagement. Whenever someone submits a project through this, through this effort, you know, they'll receive their invoice via email, they'll get a notification when it's paid, they'll get notification when the project has been deemed incomplete or complete going through that process. One of the key things that we built in too is anyone that's involved in the project will know what the status is. So one thing that we often find is, you know, the, the applicant representative will turn stuff in, they'll get red line corrections, they won't tell their client that they got that stuff back and just go, oh, it's been with the city and the process for a long time. But if they've had the, the plans for, let's say, three months on their own and didn't tell the applicant that, they're calling us, going, hey, what's the status? Like, we don't know. But this way, they will know whenever something happens on their project, they will also be apprised of it. And so if they need to, you know, help push things along, they can certainly interject in there. But we want to make sure that they know what's going on with their project in addition to the, the, the person that's helping them through the process. And then also the acceptance letter, so having all this stuff on there. And then one of the last kind of components that we've built in, you know, some of these, these different kind of forms is also adding in our project notice. We had implemented the map I referred to before, we have a Q R code on our project notice. So anytime we send out a notice to people saying, hey, there's a application proposed near your, near your house, they get the link to a Q R code that takes them to that project. And so they can view the details as soon as they get the notice and don't necessarily need to cross. Sometimes we, we welcome any, any input, but we want to make sure that they can figure out what's going on before guessing to figure it out what, what it is in itself. And then kind of the last part is using the E P N L efforts to really improve our internal processes. So one of these is, you know, when we have a public hearing that's needed, is we're able to build in to schedule, everyone that's associated with the project, here's the meeting invite for when it's gonna happen. So if you're able to come, you know exactly, you're not waiting for someone else to relay the information, but it's real time on when it's gonna be scheduled for that decision. Two is also improving kind of our conditions of approval, streamlining both the format of it, that accountability in terms of it being met, but also kind of building into the system different ways that if it's just a bunch of kind of routine conditions that's always applied, that's a lot more simplified, you don't have this wall of text you're trying to decipher through, but really keep it more germane. And then last part, that is kind of the, the really kind of fun activity, is doing a full digital and plan review process. City staff has actually reached out to applicants, architects, other design professionals, visited their offices and go, hey, when you go through this design review and going through the, 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 the online kind of digital plan review, what are things that cities do that you like and what are things that cities do that you don't like? And we tried to build in or working into our system, making sure that we're responsive to that. So if we know, hey, when cities do this and it's just makes it a nightmare for us to use, we're not gonna do that. We're trying to make sure we're very proactive in our structure that as we deploy this new technology, we're doing it in a way that's effective and proven rather than guessing on what works best. And then certainly, the last kind of component is building in a lot of different resources into it. So we've been creating, you know, slides on how to use the, the permit process, using, you know, the details about what the process is, also developing kind of internal staff resources that we know or anyone that uses our system in the future knows what is, how it's set up. And so then that way, we can be responsive through the plan review. And then also trying to leverage new technologies. So this was from our Associate Planner, Matty, had reached out to the company that's doing our permit software or the, the foundation is, hey, there's ways that we can integrate your technology with other technology we're using. And we're trying to find solutions to that so we can better tie everything together. So when you go view, view the project map, the level of effort's all there, the status all gets updated in real time. And so then that way, when someone goes to the city's website, they're getting the correct information at the right time and that it's in real time versus, you know, if there's a delay, that doesn't happen, that doesn't create an issue where people may not get the right information at the time that they're logging. And then one of the other kind of components is the update to the city's development code. Our foundation for our city's development code is from what was the county code. It's been updated kind of throughout the years, but really, it's more of a tacked-on thing. So you have this kind of document layout and we've just kind of kept adding and adding and adding over time. And other areas remain as they were. So this right here, this is a section from July first, nineteen eighty-nine. This code section is exactly the same as it was then. And so a lot of the kind of iteration of the code that the city's foundation is from was in July nineteen eighty-nine. The city incorporated in November of eighty-nine. I was born in October of eighty-nine, I'm not old. But this was the number one song in July first, nineteen eighty-nine. I don't know if I ever had listened to it before. The average house in San Bernardino County was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We are many, many times over that now. And so that just gives a kind of frame of reference that this hairstyle and the development code are, are about the same. And so we probably could use some, some sprucing up. And really, part of the process that we want to do is to, to make it more clear, add a lot more objective standards while keeping the list for flexibility. We can't anticipate what every project needs or what the best design will be, but we want to make sure that the, the expectation is clear, but flexible for, for individual architects and designers to work through it, modernizing the language and references and adding specificity. So there are certain things, you know, because we have adopted kind of what the county code was, San Bernardino County is the largest kind of, you know, geographical county in the continental U S. And so they're covering a wide range of different types of areas and communities when they had set that code up. Obviously, we are just a smaller community in, in San Bernardino County, but what we need as a, as a city doesn't necessarily reflect what, you know, out towards Needles or somebody that needs in terms of how the county administers the code. And so really trying to specialize it and providing it much more in a focused effort. And also providing one of the things that's, I think, key for me is anyone that is going through the code wants to figure out, let's say, I'm building a residential project, you have your zone district. So you have, let's say, your R M land use district, you click on there, here's your setbacks. But having the links to, okay, but when you're designing a structure, these are the other details that come in, having it all linked in kind of one spot. So once you go to the page, you find out what the zone is on the city's map, you can find all the different stuff in one spot. You're not having to know on the, you know, where everything is hidden out in the code because there's things that are just, if you don't know what you're looking for, you're gonna miss it. And, you know, we want to make sure that's a lot easier. So then that way, as you're designing or if, let's say, an architect start working on a project, they know what the rules are at the start versus sending something up, you know, in. And then we having to tell them, hey, by the way, you're missing this, this is, rule says that. Like, we want to make sure that it's much more easy at the front end because then they can design and go through the process a lot quicker. We want to make sure that it's more timely for everyone involved. And we want to make sure that people are able to do it right the first time and not, not have to go back and forth through that process. And then the last part is picture say a thousand words. And so we read through our existing development code and how, let's say, the setbacks are description. You know, what is your front yard setback? You know, that's a couple paragraphs of text, this is a picture that says the same thing. And so we want to make sure that we kind of condense everything down and making sure it's easy to understand and, and reduces the type of interpretation that's needed to do it. And so kind of last kind of component is, you know, with the, the, the Plan Department, there's no bid book of planning, there's no right answer, every property is different, every neighborhood is different. And so issues can be kind of complicated, it can be nuanced. And so we want to make sure that we can help through the process. You know, as I mentioned before, not all projects are great either. We can't stop from someone from applying for a project that we know is not a good idea. We have to help them through that, that due process. And again, planning as far as the long-term, we set the path, we can't predict everything that will happen in the future. And so the advanced planning plus the current planning are kind of really important components to help check and balance our, our process. And then certainly, the last part is kind of business-friendly reputation. And then, certainly, the last part is kind of business-friendly reputation. We get to set the stage, we want to make sure that the process is easy, but we also want to make sure that if someone wants to do business in Chiappa, they're not just bringing in the worst thing and we give them a free pass, but really making sure that it's clear and consistent and fair for everyone. And then, that way, they'll be able to respond appropriately, and we can help them through that process quickly. And then, planning itself encompasses a lot of the different city council goals that the city council had established. So, kind of going through, you know, implement a plan to correct the structural budget deficit as new projects come through and get reviewed, you know, they do impact the sales tax opportunities, they do impact property taxes and overall economic output. And so, encouraging projects to help achieve that provides, you know, a lot of that kind of long-term sustainability for the city's budget, making sure that as we plan out different infrastructure investment, that the land uses meet the needs of that infrastructure. We're not overbuilding infrastructure for projects that never actually needed it, making sure that the development, if we setting the stage, can meet there. And certainly, also having the fair share of costs being paid through that project. Certainly, the land use and design for the economic development while keeping Chiappa's unique rural feel, encouraging specific types of projects, really focusing on site design, building, landscape design, and procedures supporting kind of throughout the process and being very deliberate on the land uses. And then, certainly, enhancing public safety and kind of reducing homelessness. Certainly, one of the key components to that is the crime prevention through environmental design elements. Site design focus on how the space is used and making sure it's compatible. There's key things that when a space is laid out, that creates a more positive outcome versus those that create a more negative outcome. Certainly, for homelessness, housing, having options and capacity for people, and then also creating kind of shared spaces. And in terms of the safety kind of component, this is a picture I really do like. These are two different 20 mile per hour zones. Obviously, you can feel much more comfortable speeding than the first picture and less than the second one. And that's landscaping made that difference. And it's those little things that contribute to the crime prevention, but also just addressing kind of the land form and the rural environment versus more suburban environment and making sure that people are being safe in the spaces that they have. And then, certainly, one of the goals is continue updating municipal code. And this includes a comprehensive development code update, modernizing those frameworks and transitioning from someone that's older than I am. And then, increase communications. Certainly, the website updates is to help add more information, more resources for anyone to view, using technology to help make it more easy to visualize projects. There's another program through the Esri suite that we are starting to demo as well that can kind of do like 3D renderings of projects. And so, we want to try to see how that can work out and really making it that you're viewing it or your decision-maker, you can really see what the space is going to be like with those decisions. And then, also automating the process, so then that way, anyone that's involved is notified instantly of what the next steps are. So, then that way, they can keep moving along and keep their process going timely as well. And then, certainly, the taxpayer-friendly approach, you know, having the application accessible 24/7, providing the real-time updates, simplifying the process of procedures, really making sure that if you're an applicant, you don't need to know the ins and outs. You just kind of need to know where you turn something in, and we'll help you through the rest of the way. And making sure that staff is utilized effectively, we're not spending a lot of time doing work that maybe isn't necessarily protective for getting a project moving forward, but making sure we're really helping to get them from start to finish. And then, also, with our economic development staff, is really making sure that those that do work in the City of Chiappa feel supported through that effort and that we are there to help make the process as easy as it is. It is a process, it is part of, you know, we are the rule enforcer for development code. And so, they're not necessarily the most exciting rules for the layperson, but we want to make sure that we're doing it right for the community at large. And then, certainly, the revenue generation is, you know, the user fees that are established by a city council is to making sure that, you know, the staff costs are borne by the developer rather than the taxpayers at large. One of the changes we've done is a lot of our applications have gone to a set fee application. So, in that way, we have lost projects that owe us money at the end of the day. But even more importantly, if you're submitting a project, you know exactly what you're going to pay at the front end versus getting billed at the end, saying, oh, you owe us this amount of money at the back end. And so, it's kind of a fun, just kind of planning joke. I'm a big fan of Calvin Hobbes with my kids. You know, this town ain't big enough for the both of us. I reckon we'll part, have to, and it's part of the county. And so, it's just kind of a little planning humor in kids' scenes. And that's a department update. Happy to answer any questions.
The Community Services Department has strobe lights and music. Do you have strobe lights and music?
I did not bring my drum set.
Oh, okay. No, good presentations, Ben. Certainly, you said it right. What we build exists there for a while, and doing it right the first time is paramount. So, it wastes nobody's time, money, and resources. So, thank you for bringing this to the council. I know it's, it is, in comparison to the Community Services Department, it's more of a dry subject matter, but it is altogether needed for our community. So, thank you. Any questions of staff?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Just a couple comments. I'd like to really compliment Ben and his team. Planning staff are often in a position where they're kind of caught in the middle, right? They're often in the unfortunate position of having to deliver news to applicants that applicants may not want to hear. At the same time, they're often in the position of presenting projects that members of the community would not like to see happen, right? So, very often, planning staff are criticized from both sides. Ben and his team have really been proactive, we're really trying to implement new technologies that will be both business-friendly to make the applicant's job easier, but at the same time, be transparent to the public. So, the public can see what projects are coming, they can track each project every step of the way. I'm really proud of our planning department that we're really, the steps we're taking now are going to put us on the cutting edge of this technology that will make us very, very business-friendly, even more so than we are today, but also one of the most transparent in terms of our planning processes of any city I've seen. So, I'm excited about where we're headed and just proud of our team.
Yeah, and I'll echo the city manager's comments, you know, from the last almost four years I've been up here, I see a lot of people put the blame on the city for development projects, right? When in reality, a lot of this is private property. People want to develop their private property.